Hello, everybody. Today is January 21st. It is 6:33. Started beginning, I don't think the road agent is going to make it in tonight for his whole report. A little conflict with our schedules being on Tuesday nights and Monday. I call in Marge and said everything is basically the same as it was the last time he's here a couple of weeks ago, as far as his report. Basically doing some sanding, keeping up with the snow plowing and normal winter maintenance. So I guess moving along from that. We have a letter of deficiency from the Department of Environmental Services regarding Highland Lake Dam.
We do.
Brush cutting. Marge is going to explain.
She's going to try.
What that pile of paper means.
Yeah. We have a letter of deficiency to the town and a letter from, oh, an intent to complete the repairs. And basically, the repairs are, it's not the structure of the dam, it's brush cutting around the dam.
It needs to be done?
Yes, brush cutting.
And this is, is this the state?
This is Department of Environmental Services.
Is letting the town of Anover know?
Is letting the town of Anover know, but on a continuing basis. Cut all trees, brush and weedy growth from the footprint, the earthen embankment of the dam, and 15 feet beyond the footprint of the dam to prevent damage to the dam from root penetration, blow down of the trees, and to create a buffer zone to monitor the dam for seepage and other maintenance concerns. Areas to clear included but are not limited to, 15 feet beyond both sides of the downstream concrete headwall of the box, and they've sent photos. The upstream embankment on both sides of the drops, sure.
15 feet upstream too?
Uh huh. On the right side, we are referring to the growth that exists within the fence standing area. On the left, the inspection noted ornamental planting and two recently planted small trees, though some are all of the property on which the vegetation slash trees exist. We strongly encourage you to coordinate with the property owner to keep a 15-foot wide upper between such plantings and the concrete button wall. It should be noted that a large evergreen existed in the same location as the recently planted one in 2007. Its proximity to the dam and effects caused by the root system require its removal. Periodically clean and monitor the seepage at the weep hole drains along the left and right outlet of the box culvert, as well as the seepage along the concrete retaining wall along the downstream left and button wall. Monitor the elevation of the seepage along the interior joints of the box culvert. The dam bureau comes out and inspects every two years.
So there are...
I usually go with them, but...
Are they asking us to check the seepage things?
Yep, but by April 20th, there's paperwork that has to be done. Have to review and update the operation maintenance and response form for your dam and return it to DES and tell us what they want on it.
Is that something that Jason does or is it something the road agent?
Well, that's what I was going to ask you. Is this something that you would have the road agent do? I haven't given it to anybody. I just got it today, but I would think...
I would think so too, that they would have more experience and knowledge about...
And equipment. Yeah, I mean, I could have walkers.
We went out two...
We have, we've done some of this.
A little over two years ago.
Yeah, we've done it.
I forget the gentleman's name.
Yes, we went.
We went out, myself, Vicki, Marge, Jim might have been there. Similar request was made. It sounds ominous, but things grow back.
Yep.
People plant things and basically, I think the highway department, brush cut, cut down that evergreen. It was a small evergreen, like Christmas tree size.
Yep.
And one of the neighbors was upset when it was explained, but every couple of years the vegetation just comes back.
Who owns that?
Well, longer you leave the...
People in Brian Adams' old house.
They're going to keep coming back.
Right.
Yeah. So, well, the evergreen was pulled out. This was another planting.
Yes.
They planted another tree completely. Because we took what was there out.
That's on across the street from Brian Adams?
Correct, yeah.
Yep.
April, by April what?
20th.
20th.
Yeah, the paperwork has to be done, but the 20th.
So we, yeah, we do do that. Inside that chain link and then...
But ultimately, it sounds like we need to have some type of letter or something sent to the property owner.
Yes. Yep, I'll take care of that.
Right, with the, so they know that the state has the 15-foot wide base.
Because apparently, it's the house right across, and I forget who.
I don't know who that is.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm always looking that up.
And they sent very good pictures of what it is they're talking about, so they can show whoever's going to do it.
Very nice indeed. Excellent. Yeah, this was all cleaned out.
Oh, that's all?
Yeah, it's not, they've, not a lot, but they...
This was all cleaned out, that's just going back, overhang, and then here.
And it just needs to be, that's something that should be on the road agent's radar, that it needs to be, you know, done.
Right, absolutely, yeah, right. Once a year.
Right, yeah, it should be on an annual basis, that it's inspected by the road agent and then they can take...
Then the state turns out every two years. They're on every two-year schedule.
Yeah, it should be on a one-year, right?
Well, when they do that little cemetery up on the hill, they can make it part of that.
I hope they do it this year. It hadn't been done in two years.
What, this?
Cemetery.
Cemetery up behind the church?
No, behind the inn. I thought that's the one you were talking about.
Behind Highland Lake, what, beside it?
I didn't know it was a cemetery.
You want to roll the cemetery on down?
Wow. Pay attention.
I think we found our rest in place.
No problem. I get a stone from Bill.
Make sure you get cornerstone.
That's right. We need our, no kidding. There's a few people.
So basically, that was just information or nothing needs to be signed by the board at this moment?
Nope, not at this moment. I'll have stuff for you probably the next, I don't know, next month.
I'm going to interject Todd, if you want to ask us some questions, because the only other things on the budget that you can see is to finalize the proposed 2020 budget and then is a non-public. So we'd have to ask you. We, so, so ask and we leave and then wait outside the poll.
I'll see the budget anyway tomorrow.
Right.
Or we can actually pay them.
Well, that you can save.
I did a town administrator's report at the last minute. I didn't even put it on the agenda, but if I could get that now, that'd be good.
And then minutes, can't forget about the pack. That's not on there either.
Right. Lois has retired from her position in the select board's office and we hope she's enjoying retirement. We've received several applications for the part-time office position that she's held. I will begin the interview process as soon as the budget has been finalized and the warrant articles have been sent to the Department of Revenue Administration and Town Council for approval. The candidate filing, excuse me, the candidate filing period begins tomorrow and ends on January 31st. So if you're interested in serving on an elective committee or board, please fill out the intent to run form in the town clerk, tax collector's office. Mark your calendars. The date of the public hearing for the town budget is February 5th. The meeting will be held in the meeting room at the town offices at 7 o'clock PM. Town meeting will be held on March 10th at 7:00 PM in the school gym. The polls will be open at 11:00 AM and will close at 7:00 PM, and the meeting follows closing of the polls immediately. Beginning in the March issue of the Beacon, I will be highlighting town policies. Some will be updated and some will be policies that have been around quite a while. It's always good to review them. I'd like to thank all the committees, boards, and departments that have submitted their narrative reportments for the town report. If you're interested in proofreading articles and/or financials for the report, please call the select board's office and we'd be happy to put you to work. And that's it.
All right. Minutes, everybody, seat pads, minutes. Yep. I'm just going to hook over and roll a crack. So, I think the minutes dated you all seven minutes?
Yes, I read them.
I know they're timed.
So all in favor?
Aye, second, aye.
Aye. Todd, what questions do you have for the board?
Well, you guys kind of know, I'm considering running for select, huh? I kind of would like to know what there is like. I know I've been to some of the meetings, I know what goes on during meetings. What kind of goes on? I'll have to see what's at you can, if you can't tell me.
Well, some of it...
I'm just trying to get an idea of what I'm in for, you know?
I mean, some of the things that we do, per se, behind the scenes, interviews, position eliminations, some taxing, property-type issues, legal issues that the town has.
Tax beating is the topic, tax beating.
Tax beating. It's those types of things that we have, per se, the special work sessions and stuff for. A lot of times, those have been after hours, you know? That's some people's concerns. As far as the stuff during the day, and I know we've had, you know, the conversation on, I was so luckily voted to be the chair of the board by my two cohorts.
I did, good.
I talked to Marge about, you know, having a Monday, you know, quick meeting to keep me up, so I know kind of what's going on with the gender, who's been in and out, and try to be able to do this position a little better. It's kind of morphed into something a little bit deeper than that, which going after March meeting, it's going to go away from that, because I cannot put an extra four to six hours a month away from my business. So we're going to change that up a little bit, and that can be the discussion of the, an email, it could be something, we'll figure something out.
Anybody that's working, Todd or you or whoever, you can't really...
Right.
Hope for to come here for a half hour or an hour, whatever. Sometimes we're here an hour.
Right.
You can't do that in, maintain the job.
Right. So ultimately, not all meetings does everybody have to be there. It's a majority, you know? I generally am uptown at noon time, you know, so that's the time that I pick, because, you know, I go to the bank, grab lunch, or in the case may have a night stop, and then for a few minutes and have a conversation. Or something needs to be signed, or in the case may be bills in town, we can do those, you know? It's something that all three of us need to sign that's important, and you get out of work, you know, if you still get the position, you can do this.
Yeah, but something, you know, if it was something quick, I could probably, you know, skip the signing, something, but spend an hour during the day of just a little bit, something I can't do.
And it's, and it's not a mandatory thing. I mean, to be, to, basis board is, yes, we get paid, but it's basically voluntary position with the amount of time that it does take, whether it be after hours, in the case may be. So that, it all works, whoever ends up in the position, we all work together to try to make it work for whoever lands there, whether it be mornings or one night a week, we, you know, have questions, concerns, or something, depends on how it goes, and if we can get to a point where we can, we have a foresight of what's coming, you know, things aren't last minute, some things it just...
That will make it much easier once we do get that established.
Right.
Can you figure out what each, each member can do and what each member can't do? And so, you know, I don't have the same commitments as Chuck, I don't have the same commitments as Bill, so if there's, you know, I can jump in. And as these guys know, you know, I'm a note taker, I'll go back through and, you know, send something out, and, you know, like a draft, or, you know, just try to review, run it by Marge. I mean, that's where I try to help out as much as I can. But any of the meetings, many times, it's just confirming what we already know, making sure we're on the same page, you know? Because there's, there's not always agreement.
Right.
You want to make sure that, you know, that one isn't stepping on the other's toes. You want to make sure we have a united voice. That doesn't mean that, you know, we just go along, but you know what I'm saying? Because obviously, there's sometimes some emotional questions that come up, and we just want to make sure it's handled, you know, properly, or as best we can.
The other thing that selectmen have to be careful of is having an illegal meeting, because if two of you get together someplace and start talking about selectmen's business, then that's a majority of the board, and it's an illegal meeting. So you have to be really careful to stay away from town business if you're together or...
And the town cover, you, legally?
What?
Does the town cover, like Chuck and Bill and Dave legally for stuff they do or sign?
Stuff they, yeah, stuff they sign.
And any town businesses, right?
I can give you a book that has a little more information in it if you want.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
I said I could give him a book that has a little more information about selectmen's.
No, I'd ask that the town covers you guys legally for things you sign and what you do as a board.
Yes, yes, it does.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
You know, we do have attorney, you know, there's times it's, it's worth freaking a little call to make sure everything we're doing is proper and in check and we're covering butts on that. But, I mean, most of the, most of the things we sign are generally more just your standard routine stuff, you know, your antenna cuts, your certain policies or things that we have transact, whether it be insurance things, binders, and things that you need to pay for. And the big ones that need the one signature, we always leave that to Bill. We know we do.
You know, it's, and I'm sure, you know, the last couple of years have been interesting. We've had the White Oak situation, you know, the transfer station upgrade.
Overpart.
A number, a couple of property issues that we've, you know, and it, it just seems like, you know, your question to legal, it just seems like, you know, in the last 24, maybe 30 months, but that's all part of the transition and the change and, you know, and it is, point out some things we need to do better, and which, which is fine. Obviously, you know, town meeting is always a joy. And, but, you know, again, that's the beauty of living in New Hampshire as far as I'm concerned, you know, and so, and we just happen to have a lot in a relatively short period of time in the last couple of years.
Yeah, seems that way.
Every, every town has to go through it, and we, you know, knock on wood, you know, financially, we're in good shape. Our transfer station is in good shape. I mean, you're always critical of your own, so to speak. Other folks have commented on our transition in the highway department is, you know, you know it's coming. It's maybe a little quicker than we thought, but it's coming. But I, and again, I didn't grow up in this town. We came in '81, '82, and it was a lot of fun, and, but when, it was mentioned to me about coming on the select board, it was like, you know, I don't know whether it was ego or whatever, but I've really met a lot of really nice people and gotten to know some people I thought I knew even better. And I take a lot, and I, and I'm learning something all the time. I've learned more about equipment than I care to know. But what I found is, is every day, you know, something new, something to study. I like that kind of stuff, and so, you know, from that perspective, that's not to say sometimes it hasn't been, you know, a pain, but I think overall, the people that I've met, I mean, this, this are some really, really nice people in town.
Well, thank you. Yes, thank you for your interest. It's good to meet a lot of positions, I think, what were you saying, 13 positions?
13 total.
Positions that fill across boards, different boards in the town of Anover, so it is a lot. So, thank you for showing some interest in...
You look in the papers in every town, there are a lot of people positioned at that.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, folks kind of rise up and then they hit a certain age and, you know, and then there's a transition. But that $1,500 goes a long way, but you want to... Large, right there.
I think I'll move to Salisbury, that's free grand, over there, 100 feet, I got home.
Really?
Free command, baby.
Freedom, I thought we're all having freedom. Thanks for your support.
Thank you very much. So Marge, do you want to do, obviously, the budget thing is going to be, probably take us a little while, I don't know if we want to move into, do the non-public?
I'll see the budget in a week, so I don't have to say it now.
Or we'd be even better there.
Take care, bud.
See you, Todd. I don't know if we want...
Can we go to the non-public really quick?
Yes.
Well, not necessarily, not even necessary.
You're going to have to move. I know, because there are people out there.
I just want to clarify some things that we did upstairs. So I just...
Okay.
So we, I just want to go to non-public really quick, downstairs, we're going to come back and do the budget.
That's fine, that is fine. Just move in to do it, you know, RSA 91A colon 3, roll number 2.
Moving into non-public.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Keyser, yes, can you take your ass?
One, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
In public session at 7:00. So we're moving on to finalize the proposed 2020 budget.
The latest and the greatest. Would you put up a highway budget? And it is the one, two, third thing from the bottom, I'm not sure that's...
On highway?
Correct, yeah, highway, yeah, on page 7.
10?
Yep.
Did you say a third item from the bottom?
Yep.
Yeah.
Surely.
Yeah, because it shows 5,000 in that line. Do you want that coming out of the project line?
Yes.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yes.
I thought you changed that.
Yeah, I thought so too, but this...
Why?
Not. Oh, I love that. Pad, do you have a pen there?
Yeah.
Now, just take her side, that's okay. Thank you, Bill.
Project.
So are we adding the 5,000 to the project or it's just coming out of the 60,000?
It's coming out of the 60,000.
Right, so we don't need to add five.
Right.
That's what I thought.
So the bottom line is going to be...
5,000 left.
5,000 left.
Yep.
So that's, right, so explain that 5,000, I think like it's, I listened earlier, was just to recognize that project...
Right.
From last year's town meeting.
Yep.
So that 5,000 basically represents two catch basins for that project, which was like $4,800, I believe. So both of those have been purchased, that's why it does not need to be in there anymore.
Yeah.
And then to finish that project, you can come on special projects.
Zero. No issue from going back to Turkey. And Marge, you'll be, in all the towns that are building, basically, so, following the town regulations. What I didn't realize is, we don't count there's a...
You only have two on the hour. Highway department, you lower that, down to...
The fly might be, you know, whatever, you or two, they, they get it, unless you're alive.
Did that change in the morning?
And the previous, that if the letter, that was basically doing monitoring and...
So no issue too for the highway department, if we're going to do, I like a better term, lawn maintenance for brushing. I like a better term lawn maintenance for brush. So, if the highway department's moving a brush on the lake.
Oh, hell, yeah. Should be enough there in the waiting lot.
Yep. But somebody, it's one more thing you don't normally do, you know, I mean, it's only a couple of hours, but it's...
But that can come out of the project line, can it? If it's, if it turns out to be more than we anticipate.
Because that's more so due to that.
Yeah.
Wavels, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Monitoring.
Monitoring, yeah.
Yeah, I think a little, little bit of it is, I think that can just come out of your regular maintenance lawn, it's not like it's...
That's not a big deal, it's one of those little things.
Right, but if you keep up on note every year, it'll be less and less, and you know, trees aren't going to be as big, you just can go out there and do some shears and...
Books up, right?
Solid waste picking fees, those were brought up this year, right? Hopefully, we'll be good with that number.
We don't have our final number yet, so we'll elaborate, we're waiting on it, but it won't be too, too much in progress.
We do a slight cushion there.
Question on the transfer station salaries, okay? We voted to give them a dollar an hour raise, with three of them, and Shandor, $2 an hour?
Don't think that was officially $2.
We talked about it in one meeting, we all agreed, three of us.
Oh, the one I...
Just a little work session.
Yeah, you can't order a work session.
We're gonna close on Fridays.
I would like to talk about that in another meeting session, before it's done.
I mean, I did, that's right, yes. So, I propose that we guys do this, and, and if they start to run out, so you can
Forest fire, being the nicest man on, whether the phone was needed or not needed?
No, it's not needed.
What did, we decide to do, what are we gonna have, a hall of solid waste, not? So, have they been notified yet?
I'm assuming they've got a contract of some kind, but I haven't heard back.
Is the, well, they live at the same cost as what the other gentleman's...
It's much cheaper.
Cheaper, they like cheaper. Good.
Like $100, all cheaper.
That's a lot towards the end of the year.
Yeah, that's up quick.
We can maybe eventually talk to them about the C and D if this is ending there in.
Yeah, if we can, I go talk to NRRA, and they say yes, then I'll call them right up.
Good.
What was the forest fire, we debated on whether they were going to continue to use it, and they're not.
There's a cell fire.
Should be able to get on the guest, upstairs, if you're in trouble.
We're on it, so...
Yeah, interesting to see what happens. I can kind of note that school doesn't have power, I mean, it's just good.
Yeah, I saw that tonight, that's good.
Yeah, see where that falls, I could come on late. I think on that, I think there's some monies that are in there, that, um, the remaining Fridays, part of the business. I don't think it's the proper time to talk about it.
Not now?
But, yeah, we can talk about it in another... It's fine.
So, which my, my raise, 2%? Is that what your raise is?
Three, like everybody else, I think. Three, like everybody else?
3%?
Yep.
You get that in yield?
No.
No?
No.
Anything, Dave, besides the, like, the 5,000?
No, no, we're pretty good shape overall.
Okay, so we can get this finished up, and get it off to Arch, so he can dissect it. So, it's approved of that, we can move into, um, non-public session per RSA 91 dash A colon 3, roll the number 2, and there's C for reputation.